Okay. Let me just show the agenda. So we'll do the pledge of allegiance now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Gabby, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Smith, Ms. Turkleven?
Yes.
Mr. Porter? Mr. Reggino?
You're on mute, Kevin.
Mr. Reggino?
Here.
Chairman Ring?
Yes, I'm here. All right, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of November's meeting? I think you're on mute, Andy. All right.
Okay, now it says the host had been muted, so now I'm unmuted, and I'll make the motion.
All right, I'll second that motion. Andy, do you, Gabby, do you want to call the roll?
Ms. Turkleven?
Aye.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Chairman Ring?
Yes. Okay. I would like to open the public hearing for Dan Furman, which is an area variance to allow a six-foot fence in the front setback. Let me share my screen here.
Are you gonna put up my pitiful little drawing?
Yes, I am.
I am not an artist.
Share your screen. Okay, so here's the application. And I believe you sent also some Google map and town map. Let me see. I've got that here. I believe this is yours. Let me also share, share this screen. Can you see the screen now?
Nope.
How about now?
Just see the fence up. There it is.
Okay, great. So this is the property that we're talking about. And Mr. Furman, can you talk about where you want the fence and describe it based on what you, what we see in this picture here?
Well, the fence is, the fence is on the north side of the house. If you move your cursor up a little bit, nope, that's south. Yeah, right there, right there, right up there. That's where the fence is, right, yeah, right there. And then right about, if you go to the, right about there, if you go towards the house, that's where it cuts in. Yeah, and then it goes all, all the way to back, the whole back of the house and the whole side, the other side of the house.
So you're basically, the fence is this area here?
Yes, sir. And what I'm asking for a variance for is right about where your cursor is there now. On Dogwood Lane there, I'm closer than 30 feet to the road. And it's, that's not right. It should be four feet. And like I had mentioned last month, when the fence was originally built, the contractor did build it to four feet. I never really saw the permit. He got the permit. I should have paid more attention, but, you know, he had the permit, he built it four feet. That fence eventually, it was wood fence. My dog really challenged it a lot. He was a 100-pound dog. And weakened it, and then the wind blew it down. So when I had the fence redone, like five or six years ago, I had a different contractor, fencing contractor. And he, you know, and I just said, make it six foot. And he said, yeah, six foot, right? I said, yeah, six foot, of course. Why? I don't even know why the last guy didn't do six foot. So we just did, we did six foot. And everything was fine until, you know, my wife looked at our permits and stuff and said, uh-oh. That ain't right.
Okay. And Warren, we've already had input in from the, from Frank Petromal on the sightlines on this, and there were no issues.
No issues with sightlines, no issue with snow storage.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions from the public hearing gallery that they would like to ask Mr. Furman? Right, and Gabby, I believe you received a telephone call or an email from one of Mr. Furman's neighbor. Can you just describe that conversation?
That was actually for the Dernisons. I did not have any correspondence on Mr. Furman's.
Okay, my mistake then. All right, thank you. Then I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second? Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, Kevin. All right, is there any discussion among the board on this application? Okay?
I don't have anything.
All right, do we have a motion then for this application?
I'll move it.
So you'll make an affirmative motion to approve the six-foot fence variance?
Yes.
Okay, I will second it. Gabby, you want to call the roll?
Ms. Turkleven?
Aye.
Mr. Reggino?
Give a thumbs up. There you go. So you're in, okay?
Chairman Ring?
Yes. All right, Mr. Furman, enjoy your six-foot fence.
Thank you very much. Have a great Christmas, everybody.
You too.
Have a good night.
All right. All right, the next order of business is, let me go back to the agenda, and this is Jeremy and Sarah Durnson. Is, is somebody here representing Mr. Durnson? Okay, Michael? You want to unmute yourself? There we go. How's that?
All right, cool. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, awesome.
Okay, so let me bring up your site plan here. And let me share my screen. Okay. You, you were here last month, if I recall, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. What I just asked you to do is go ahead and describe your project again. What you would like to do, I believe it's in the front of the house here, in the gray shaded areas, and the variances that you're asking for?
Yeah, so, so I am with Councilon Architecture, and the Dernisons came to us and asked us to rework their front entry and to expand their living room, which happens to be on the front of the house. And so we proposed to bump out the front of the house four feet and to add a new covered front porch to their house. And so, yeah, so we're asking for a, an area variance in the front yard setback, as well as it appears to be in the side yard setback, although we are not changing the sightlines on the side of the house.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And, and Warren, in our town code, this is R10, I believe, right, Michael?
Yeah.
We have, on some R zoned areas, we have a limitation of the percent coverage on the space. Does that apply to R10? I don't remember off the top of my head.
No, there is no maximum lot coverage percentage for this area or zone.
Warren?
I believe when Warren chimed in last month, it wasn't applicable to any residential, any residential zones.
Okay.
That is correct. My, my screen didn't want to unmute, so max building lot coverage does not apply in any residential district.
Got it. All right, great. All right, then, I'd like to open the floor for anyone who wants to speak about the project Mr. Bandana is representing.
Jeff, you might want to open the public hearing.
That would help. I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second it.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye. So I'd like to open the public hearing for, for anyone to speak about this project, either for the project or against the project. And Gabby, you did receive one comment from a neighbor?
I did. I received correspondence from David Black, who lives behind to the right of the Dernisons. He was just wondering where exactly they were building the addition. I explained that it was going off the front of the house, off Columbia Street, not off the rear of the house. He was just concerned if they built off the rear, it would be going closer to his residence, which all the lots are already pretty small, and I think he has a pool, budding, everything. So he just wanted to make sure that they weren't building towards him, and he was good to go for the requested variance and gives them his go-ahead.
Okay. Cool. Anyone else from the, from the public gallery that would like to make a comment?
Oh, I just remembered, I received a different phone call from the neighbor to the left of them. And they were concerned, they misunderstood the request of variance, thinking it was going much further towards the road. When I explained it was only a four-foot bump out, he said, we all said, great, it was fine. He wasn't worried about it.
Okay, great, great. Okay. Um, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second it.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay. Do we have a discussion among the board members on this request?
I'm just trying to get a sense. It's only coming, it's only coming up a couple more feet, correct?
Four, four feet, four feet more than it is now.
Yeah, it's not much.
Yeah, I'm pretty satisfied with his neighbor behind him being all right, with his neighbor to the, the right there being fine, so I don't see a problem.
Yeah, if it were more than four feet where it would really stick out when you look down the street, but four feet's not that much where it would make an impact visually as you're looking down the street, so.
I will reiterate that it will not be closer to the road as some of the other houses on the street.
Yeah, no, it's fine, yeah.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve his variance.
I'll second the motion. Gabby, do you want to call the roll?
Ms. Turkleven?
Aye.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Chairman Ring?
Yes. All right, enjoy your addition.
All right, thank you. And
All right.
Happy holidays to everybody.
Yeah, Merry Christmas and enjoy the season.
You too. All right, see ya.
Okay, I would like to open the preliminary hearing for Albany 7 LLC, Dino Ritchie. I'd like to make a comment that I was in, I attended the planning board yesterday, and I'm much more satisfied with the level of preparation and scope of the project than we have in the past, so I think, I think it is ready now to hear the public hearing. I'm sorry, the preliminary hearing. So I believe, Mr. Interante, you are representing the applicant, Dino Ritchie, and I believe from what I saw yesterday, you had some drawings and and items, I believe we were asking for three variances on this property?
Zero, you there?
I'm here, but I'm muted.
Got it, okay.
Be fine now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you let me share my screen, I can I can bring up the drawings from last night.
Yep, you're, you're good to go.
Okay, so what we talked about last night was well, the first variance is the use variance, you know about that. The second variance is for the setback. So I want to zoom in on this setback requirement. The 24 feet is for this front-
I'm sorry to interrupt. Are you, I don't think you're sharing anything. I can't see it.
I can't see it either.
Oh. Okay, I'm, I'm seeing it on my screen. I think you have, oh, wait a second. It says host disabled participants screen sharing, so you have to let me share for your end.
Well, let me fix that. I don't see that here. No, I actually have, I have your file, so let me go ahead and, and pull up your file and I'll, I'll share it if so he here is here is your drawing, I believe, from yesterday.
Yeah, if you scroll down towards the bottom.
Okay.
Okay, so at the very bottom, you'll see the 24 feet. That's measured to the front of the oh, that's an old drawing.
It is an old one?
Yeah, I sent out the updated plans today. It should be in your email.
Hold on, I know I, I downloaded multiple ones today.
So let me just- Give another try at letting me share my screen?
Absolutely.
Chairman, I believe there's an option right to the right of the shares screen option. And if you click that and go to advanced settings, it should let you choose to let more participants share their screen.
Yep, okay, I got that. I fixed that.
Were you able to see my screen?
Uh, no.
All right.
There we go. All right.
All right, so this area right here where my cursor is, from, it's 24 feet from the front property line to the front projection of the stairwell. And then it goes another five feet back to the main body of the building, so the main body is about 29 feet back from the, from the property line. So I'm going to show you that, that elevation that faces Ulster Avenue. So this is the part of the building that faces Ulster Avenue. So this stairwell is 24 feet from the roadway, but the main body of the bigger portion of the building is 29 feet from the, from the property line. So that, that's the, the, the the six-foot variance that we're asking for on that. The other variance that I sent in a letter for today was generated because of the comments from the highway department, and what they, they sent me a marked up version of this, of which I've implemented. And basically, they want to, they want us to close off this existing curb opening and this existing curb opening, and just have one curb opening right here. Right now, that curb opening is this dark line, but they want to move that so that it's 43 feet from this front corner, and this is 35, 30-foot wide opening. So what I've done was pushed this island back, left the sign where it was, and made this the opening. But going along with that, they requested that these three parking spaces be removed. So that's why we, I sent in a letter today asking for that the zoning application be amended to include the, the request for these three, the variance on these three parking spaces. So I haven't, obviously haven't changed this plan yet, which I will do, because we've gotten comments from the planning board last night. So there's a few things I need to do to modify this plan, and part of what I will be modifying is eliminating these three parking spaces.
In, in my understanding is that the requirements for parking is two and a half spaces for each apartment, but these are single-bedroom apartments, and so the total required, I believe, was 62, and you're going to have 59, and-
59 plus three handicap, which makes us 50, 62, but we're going to lose three, so we'll be down to 59.
59, right?
I thought we were gaining one by eliminating one of the loading zones for the accessible space, that the handicap space on the west side of the building. Then we have two loading zones for one space?
Hmm, yeah, I guess we could eliminate this one and gain one.
Gain another space.
That what you're talking about, Warren, right here?
Yeah, that's the one I'm, I'm talking about. That would give you, so now you're only asking for a reduction of two, which in the grand scheme of things is 2% of the total. You're asking for a 2% reduction in parking.
I may seem out of line when I ask this. Can we ask for the trees just as a, as a margin of safety?
I was going to suggest that you do, do that.
The answer is yes. Also too, I want to let everybody know what I'm sure Chairman, you're aware of. They're one-bedroom apartments, and zoning wants two and a half spaces per one-bedroom, so nine apartments for 22 spaces. And the gentleman mentioned last night, if we take a half, a half a space off every, every one, we'll, we'll get four spaces. We're only asking for three.
I, I think you should ask for three.
Yeah.
I agree.
There have been conversations in the past about looking at this, and we had some information today about other localities, municipalities, that base their parking on the actual number of bedrooms, not just dwelling units. One and a half space for a one-bedroom, two spaces for a two-bedroom, so on and so forth. So at some point in the future, we may modify that. So if we did do one and a half, you have, clearly have more than you need.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm comfortable with the application requesting three, a three parking space variance. I'm comfortable with that.
We are also.
Okay. So the, the three variances that you're requesting are the use variance, the
Correct.
six-foot front setback variance, and the three car parking space variance.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any discussion from the board on this project?
Okay. Am I unmuted now?
You are.
Okay, okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, because there were some emails that were going around, that it was up to the planning board about allowing, you know, changing the parking and not requiring a variance. So I was just double-checking on what the outcome of that conversation was.
It could actually be handled by any of the three boards.
Okay. Okay. That was my only question. You know, from where, from, from the very beginning to where this has come, it's really, you know, you've done a lot of work and like, you know, that's it. You've done a lot of work. Looks good.
Thank you. Kevin, any comments from you?
There we go, thank you. Um, my main concern was the entrance there with the, it was pretty, pretty tight as it was for cars to get in and out. I think, I think it's been addressed well. Like Andy said, I think they've come a long way from the first time I saw this project. And, and I don't see, I don't see any other problems. I'm happy that the, the entrance problem, or the entrance situation got, got modified to a to a place where, you know, it's going to make sense. So I think I'm good.
All right, then, do we have a motion on the table?
I'll make the motion that we, what do we have to do here?
Send it to public hearing.
I'll make the motion, we move it to a public hearing.
And Gabby, we need, also need to send it for, to county, because it's on a county road.
Yes, we're going to need two motions, one for county and one for the public hearing.
Okay, so let's stay with the public hearing for now. I will second that motion. Gabby, call the roll.
Ms. Turkleven?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Chairman Ring?
Yes. And do we have the second motion?
I'll make the motion to send it to county.
I'll second it. This is Andy.
Can you call the roll?
Ms. Turkleven?
Aye.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Chairman Ring?
Yes.
I would like to make a request that you don't send it to the county until after I send in my next layer of revisions, because they've already made comments about some of the things that were talked about at the planning board meeting last night, which were, which I'm in the process of changing. And I'd like to make that some, that upgraded submission, and then have you send it to the county, if that's okay.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Just work with Gabby. Please know that the planning, or the zoning board will meet the first Wednesday of January. So in order to get on the agenda, you're going to want to be fairly, you know, diligent and quick about updating it so that Gabby can prepare the proper paperwork to go to county, so that you can make January, unless January's not a concern for you.
Yes, I have to have everything in by the 23rd to make it for January's meeting.
Okay, I could do that.
Okay.
Okay, that's good. I'll do that.
I want to, I want to thank everybody for, for your consideration, and a question to Zero. The, the signs that we got today, you have pictures of them, so we could show Mr. Todd-
Yeah, I do.
Get their opinion on this? I got to ask you guys your opinion on this. Something doesn't make sense, and I don't know if I have to get a, a variance for the sign, I, 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 or, I don't know how that works, but I'd rather bring it to your attention now and get all your opinions on it.
Can you see this on your screen?
No.
Let me try to
Says, please move this window away from the shared application.
So just please move this window, the shared application.
Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the sign done by the sign company and where I had shown just sort of a blank spot here. It was part of trying to break up this front stairwell. I added a window here, a window here and let this facade run or the roof run across to break that. Uh and now you're showing just sort of a blank panel here where the proposed sign could go. But the sign design company uh just sent this to me about an hour ago. So we're anticipating putting a sign there as well as the sign perpendicular to the highway. I believe zoning allow, zoning orders allows thirty, thirty square feet for this sign. And fifty square feet per side for the uh the roadway side. This is two and a half by twelve.
Exactly thirty square foot on the sign and since the building is, has a sixty-foot linear dimension. One square foot for every two linear feet, thirty square feet.
Zero, you got a picture of that monument sign?
Uh that was on the other uh drawing.
Yeah.
What I think Warren just said was for the sign on the building. Um the way it's described here is thirty square feet. And it may, meets the requirements of no more than thirty square feet on the building.
So we would not need a variance for this sign?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, thi- this sign wasn't really in question. Um the other sign, because of the corridor project, so they stated, as you're aware of. Um that they wanted a monument sign, so I had her create a monument sign, eight foot high, fifty square foot max. On both sides and it comes off.
I I I don't believe this is part of the corridor. This is Albany Avenue, the corridor is nine W, so I don't believe that this is part of the corridor.
Oh, they said it's the the corridor project and you need to get a monument sign that's eight foot high. But fifty square feet total per side. And when we fabricated, had G and S group do it for me today, when you do that, it comes off the ground twenty-four inches. In case you have two foot of snow. And when you do that, as we pulled out from our first zoning meeting. We're very concerned about our visual view of pulling out the lot. And they wanted me to move the sign further north of where it is existing in the island now. And if we do that and put a monument sign, when you're pulling out with your car, you're not going to be able to see north. You're blocking your visual view. If in fact, we keep the sign that we are, that's there now. And made it a little thinner in the post like Mr. O- Oomquist recommended, therefore you have better visual view that way. So the question is, I want to show you both, this is how a monument sign would be further north, you really can't see what's going on. But if we keep it the way it is, with two signs above, you have total visual view north and south. So would I need a variance to ask for it? Because I think this, this sign doesn't make sense. This is a new corridor project, so they mentioned. Mr. Maloney, whatever his name is. And the other way, I think has a better visual view of Zero. Could you show them the other way that we proposed?
Yeah.
We had it. Please?
Hold on.
So at the close of the meeting last night, I did pull out the corridor requirements. And this portion of Ulster Avenue is not in the nine double W corridor enhancement project.
Excellent.
That, that being said, um sightlines are of a major concern. Um so if we come up with something of this proposed sign, maybe.
Yeah.
Uh you had said to tell, the suggestion was maybe not such a massive pillar. I believe that's what Frank said.
Correct.
Along these lines though, will uh, it'll, it'll be fine because we do need that.
Because that sightline is beautiful right there. You can see everything and I can make it narrow, whatever you want me to do.
Yep, and and this is a planning board issue, not a zoning board issue, as long as the.
Okay, I just wanted to double check. I don't want them to kick me back to you guys.
Yep.
You hold on a second, I can look up size requirements for that type of sign.
Yeah, I'm just trying to save time and get everybody's input.
Yeah, yeah, or we can do that when it goes to planning. It's like I, like the chairman said, this this'll, this'll go before planning for their approval.
Okay.
So I can get that information forwarded to you and uh and Zero. I don't want to hold up anybody more than I have to.
No problem. Thank you guys for your time. I appreciate it. And if I don't see you guys before then, have you all have a Merry Christmas, see you and your family. Happy holidays.
It's so, so you know what, you know what will happen next, right? Um next meeting, which will be January, will be the public hearing like you heard some of the others. Where neighboring property owners or anybody in the town can, you know, voice an opinion for or against your project. And based on what we hear, based on our feelings of the project and and the variances that you've asked for. We will take a vote to um approve or deny your project and that if all the paperwork comes in, will be January.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a happy holiday, everybody. Thanks.
Happy holiday.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Gabby.
You're welcome.
Just, all right, um.
Jeffrey, did you see the comments from county about this project?
I did. They were, they were long and numerous.
Well, they always are. You'll be welcome to the planning board. You'll find out.
Yeah.
But they seem very um positive about the use variance.
Yeah, the the, yes, because, in large part because of the lack of um housing. You know, in this area, so. All right, um I think, I think that concludes the business for today. Um, let me just take a quick look here. Yep. Um, I just have a couple of comments before we close, so. Um, this is my last uh night as the zoning chairman. I've served five years and three months. Um I wanted to thank, you know, everybody who uh I've worked with here. I've learned a lot from everybody. Um I wish Lois were here. I learned a lot from Lois uh as well. And especially uh Mr. Kovacs, all always your guidance and uh conversations I've enjoyed, so. Um I will miss this board and I do truly appreciate the opportunity to have served with you and um. Wish you the best of of uh luck going forward. Uh I'm not sure who is going to be the chairman. Um Mr. Co- uh Jason, do you know?
Thank you. Uh first of all, I want to thank um Jeffrey for his service on the board. Uh especially as chairman over the past couple of years. Jeffrey, thank you. You've done a great job. Um running meetings and keeping everyone updated and uh look forward to working with you on the planning board. As far as the zoning board for next year, we'll have at least two new members. I don't know who they are. Um I don't know who the chairman will be, but. The supervisor of the town board will work very diligently on that over the next couple of weeks and hopefully we'll have a. A couple of new personnel uh in January.
Okay, is is Mr. Porter not serving again?
My understanding is he's going to step down, uh which is unfortunate. Bob's a great guy. Um, I heard that secondhand, so if I'm incorrect about that. I'm incorrect, but that's what I, that's what I understand.
Sure, sure, okay. All right, um, thank you.
Thank you. The short time we've been together, I appreciate it.
Great, and if I can uh help in any way, please don't hesitate to call me. I, looks like I'm not going to be able to go very far here.
Not at all.
Um with that, I would like to make a motion to close the December zoning board meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, enjoy the evening. Merry Christmas and uh have a good time with your family.
Have a good holiday, everybody. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.